Good evening. This, the 121st meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by the Honorable Helen Holton. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us humble our hearts and look to the Lord. Eternal, gracious, and loving God, you are the only wise, true God that makes all things possible. You sit high and look upon the earth at we, your children, your beloved creation. You see all that we do, the good, the bad, and the ugly, and yet you continue to love us and show steadfast mercy. In Micah 6:8, it is said, "What does the Lord require of you? To act justly, and to love mercy, and to walk humbly with our God." We as your servants, chosen by the people to serve in a just manner, we ask that you humble our hearts and incline our ears to hear from you, Lord God, that we might act in a manner that will reflect your love for your people. This prayer today is that you would open our eyes to see a new reality of harmony, peace, love, justice, and oneness. Lord God, we pray for all the victims of violence. We pray for the grieving families that have lost loved ones unjustly in a sin-sick world. Lord God, please use us to be a reflection of true democracy, equity, and fairness for all the people of this great city and beyond. Lord God, we ask that you bless our mayor, our city council president, and all council members. Help us to be true ambassadors and leaders who lead with an open heart, a clear conscience, and an eye toward heaven. We who have been chosen to lead, help us to lead by examples of justice, mercy, and humility. However we began this day, help us to end it in a better frame of mind than which it Let us reflect on how we have made life better for someone by lightening the load or lifting a burden. Help us to restore hope and joy and opportunity in our beloved city. I recently read a prayer of a soldier on the battlefield and found it most appropriate for this day. I asked God for strength that I might achieve. I was made weak that I might learn humbly to obey. I asked for health that I might do greater things. I was given infirmity that I might do better things. I asked for riches that I might be happy. I was given poverty that I might be wise. I asked for power that I might have the praise of others. I was given weakness that I might feel the need of God. I asked for all things that I might enjoy life. I was given life that I might enjoy all things. I got nothing that I asked for, but everything I had hoped for. Almost despite myself, my unspoken prayers were answered. I am among all people most richly blessed. And it is in the name of our Lord and Savior that we say amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and Thank you, Councilwoman Holton, for the invocation. The clerk will call the role of the members.
President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark, Holton. Mr. President, we will call.
Thank you. Is Ms. Chris Wilson of the MTA here? No? Okay. It is the Council of Customs to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Council Vice President Riceinger. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the general, Mr. General, the President of the proceedings.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the June 6th City Council Meeting is on the council member's desk.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Branch. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The journal is adopted. Thank you, Councilman Curran. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page 2 of the agenda. Bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 16-0693, repeal of Port Covington Urban Renewal Area and Plan. Ordinance for the purpose of repealing Ordinance 87-1075, as amended by Ordinances 87-1179 and 88-1, which established the Port Covington Urban Renewal Area and Plan and providing for special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to Urban Affairs and Aging Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0694, South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District Establishment. Ordinance for the purpose of creating a community impact district to be known as the South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District, specifying the boundaries of the district, creating an authority and providing for its rights, duties, powers, and funding, providing for the selection and composition of the Authority Boards of Directors, providing for an administrator for the authority, mandating the fiscal, mandating the financial responsibilities of the authority and the city in conjunction with the operation of the district, specifying the city's role in maintaining and enhancing existing services, designating the Board of Estimates as the agency charged with reviewing and approving various matters relating to the district and the authority, providing for the renewal, expiration, and termination of the district and the authority, including the authority, its Board of Directors, and its staff within the purview of the city public ethics law, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the existence, operation, and control of the South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District and Authority. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Urban Affairs and Aging Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0695, Plant New Development Amendment 1, New Shallow Baptist Church. Ordinance for the purpose of approving certain amendments to development plan of the New Shallow Baptist Church, Plant New Development, and conforming a reference. Sponsored Mosby.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0696, Plant New Development Amendment 1, Kennedy Krieger Institute. Ordinance for the purpose of approving certain amendments to development plan of the Kennedy Krieger Institute, Plant New Development. Stokes.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. There are no resolutions. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda, as there are motion to approve the consent count. Moved by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. This count is approved. Chair recognized, Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, at this time, I would move that all the remaining bills on second and third reader be referred to by short.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of short titles for the remaining of the hearing, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. We will now move the bills on second reader. Budget and Appropriation Committee. What's with him? I can't hear you. Chair recognized, Councilman Welsh.
I'd like to request floor privileges.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have with us today members of the lacrosse team at Franklin Square Elementary Middle School. They're returning again. They were again champions of their league this year. Will you please join me on the floor, members of the team and their coach as well?
Excuse me, excuse me, Councilman. Councilman Welsh is moving to extend floor privileges to his guests, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of extending floor privileges, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Your guest may take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, and members, as I said, this is the second year that this team has won this Baltimore City championship, isn't it? Come on over here, Dr. Crawley. You're so instrumental in this. This is Dr. Crawley, who is the greatest advocate for children that I've ever seen. And he has mentored and started a star program and a number of things at Franklin Square and is instrumental in assisting the coach. And as you know, most head coaches get the work done through their assistant coach. So I applaud you on everything that you've done with our students, with our scholars. And I'm looking at the medals that they wear, and they wear them proudly. I want to present you, Dr. Crawley, with the City Council Resolution for the work that you've done. And Coach, I can't pronounce your name, Fiery? I appreciate it like a boat, Ferry, with the resolution as well. And let me borrow the council ladies' space for just a second. Always, always. My mom sat next to you for years. I'm going to read the first one. And it's going to be to Jonathan Bradley Christian. Oh, this is the team boosters. These aren't in the correct order. Let me, let me reverse them. Let's go from the bottom. Go down three? Okay. I put these in the correct order. All right, we're going to start with the head coach. The City Council of Baltimore Resolution be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its serious congratulations to Mr. Ryan Ferry, Athletic Director and Head Coach, in recognition of Franklin Square Elementary Middle School. Peacocks? I can't read this fancy writing. Lacrosse team's second consecutive championship.
Win in the 2016 Baltimore City Middle School Lacrosse League.
Thank you. I'm so glad you can read. Start using regular script, these fancy scripts. The entire, the entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution, pre-presented on this 13th day of June 2016, by our Council City President Bernard C. Jack Young, me, Councilman William Pete Welch, and all the members of the Baltimore City Council. Coach, congratulations on coaching such a wonderful team. And Dr. Crawley, I would like to present you with a similar resolution. And Dr. Crawley, I would like you to come over on this side for just a second. Switch a little bit. And I would like for you to read the names, since they print these things in such a really fancy script that I can't read. Read the names of your lacrosse players and their titles as you present resolutions to each and every one of them.
To our principal, Terry Patton. I must recognize her. Okay. This is the ones that are here. Okay. Our eighth graders, unfortunately, are now ninth graders, so they forgot where we are. Taiwan Hawkins.
Come on up.
Malachi Lovless. Okay, he's not here. Jermaine Glover. Okay, he's not here. Okay, he's not here. That's, that's a team. He's not here. Corey Bowden Jr. Jonathan Bradley, one of our boosters and supporters. Mr. Curtis McMeacon, one of our boosters and supporters. I must say, last year, we didn't have any boosters or supporters. It's amazing what happened. Councilman, I think Corey had something he wanted to say real quick.
Doesn't he look familiar? So, Councilman Pete Welch, you've been with us since day one, and we really couldn't have this championship without you. And as we see in our perspective, you're a part of our team. So I would like to present you with this medal because you're a champion along with us.
Council President, can you join us for a photo? Oh, let me put my medal on. Oh, this is great.
My name's, my name's. It might be the last time we can be smaller than this.
Where is he?
Championship.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you to the lacrosse team from Franklin Square Elementary Middle. Let's give them another hand.
We'll now move the bills on second reader, Budget and Appropriation Committee. Yeah, we're doing short titles.
City Council Bill 16-0645, Supplementary Conduit Enterprise Fund Capital Appropriation, Department of Transportation, $20 million.
Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very important measure that has been deliberated for quite some time. We realize the swiftness of moving this forward, and we had a very good hearing, and the committee moves this favorable.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill 16-0646, Supplementary Conduit Enterprise Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Transportation, $6,252,636.
Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a companion bill that goes with the first. And I need to just publicly thank the committee members of the Budget and Appropriations Committee for moving this swiftly. Once we got sufficient information, the committee recommends a favorable report.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader, Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0662, rezoning 1215 East Fort Avenue.
Chair recognized, Council Vice President Riceinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Riceinger.
Mr. President, there's no amendments to this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader. Third reader to be held at one meeting.
City Council Bill 15-0599, zoning conditionaries conversion of two dwelling units to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, 35 South Fulton Avenue.
Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 15-0495, zoning conditionaries conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to two-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district, 926 Newington Avenue. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0572, zoning conditionaries conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four-family dwelling units in the R7 zoning district, Ferentz's 1715 Spence Street. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0595, city streets closing Bayless Street. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0614, tax sales interest rate on redemptions. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0622, repeal of ordinance 02-299, Black House Courthouse, six plant new development. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0627, property tax credit, city supplement to homeowners' tax credit program. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
Councilwoman Middleton, do you want to be recorded as a yes on this bill? You can read it again.
President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0633, plant new development designation, Canton Crossing. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0634, employees retirement system and elected officials' retirement system, actuarial assumptions, benefit payments, clarifications, and modifications. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0640, bond issue, affordable housing loan, $6 million. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0641, bond issue, school loan, $34 million. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0642, bond issue, community and economic development loan, $45 million. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0643, bond issue, recreation parks and public facilities loan, $45 million. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0651, property tax exemption, community managed open space. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 16-0660, charter amendment, Inner Harbor Park. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0661, adult entertainment businesses, national human trafficking resource center hotline information sign posting. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0665, sale of property, former bed of Sinclair Lane and certain streets lying within the former Freedom and Claremont Homes project, now known as Orchard Ridge. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Holton, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0666, city property naming the bridge located between 1,200 and 1,300 blocks of Fort Avenue to be the Karen J. Johns Memorial Bridge. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Chair recognized, Councilman Costello.
Mr. President and colleagues, the family just asked me to convey how grateful they were for the gesture of renaming the bridge after Ms. Johns, so thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 16-0672, charter amendment, Board of Estimates, local small and disadvantaged business enterprise program. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Holton, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcement. Chair recognized, Councilman Henry. You was quick on that one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce hearings.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce to Henry, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognized, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing Community Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 16-0679, street encroachment, 201 North Schroeder Street, on Wednesday, June 22nd, at 3:00 p.m. here in chambers. Mr. President, I need to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce to Henry, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognized, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing Community Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 16-0680, street encroachment, 101 North Schroeder Street, at 3:05 p.m. on Wednesday, June 22nd, here in the council chambers. I need to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending the rules, to announce to Henry, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognized, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing Community Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 16-0681, city streets closing a portion of West Franklin Street at 3:10 p.m. on Wednesday, June 22nd, here in the council chambers. I need to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending the rules, to announce to Henry, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognized, Councilman, excuse me, Henry. I'm writing, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing Community Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 16-0683, city streets opening the beds of Heniman Avenue and a 10-foot alley at 3:15 p.m. here in council chambers on Wednesday, June 22nd. Finally, I need to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3.
Second by Councilman Curran. All those in favor of suspending the rules, to announce to Henry, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognized, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing Community Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 16-0684, city streets closing the beds of Heniman Avenue, a 10-foot alley and a 20-foot alley, at 3:20 p.m. on Wednesday, June 22nd, here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognized, Councilman Craft. Oh, you have something, Councilman Curran?
Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a hearing on Council Bill 160613, corrective bill for 2016, on Tuesday, June 28th, 2016, at 9:30 a.m. here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognized, Councilwoman, you have committee announcements? Oh, Chair recognized, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 160658 on July 14th at 3:00 p.m. here in council chambers, and its ordinance concerning the Baltimore City Landmark List, the exteriors of the Ambassador Theater. The Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 160657 on July 14th at 3:05 p.m. here in council chambers. It's an ordinance concerning a Baltimore City Landmark List exteriors, the Apostolic Faith Church of God Building, July 14th. The Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 160659 on July 14th at 3:10 p.m. here in council chambers. It's an ordinance concerning a Baltimore City Landmark List, the exteriors of St. Mark's Institutional Baptist Church. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognized, Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's just a reminder that the Labor Committee will meet Wednesday at 5:00, televised by Charm City TV, for the $15 minimum wage. Just a reminder, council members, it's expected to be a long and lengthy hearing. We're going to have several hundred people who could be coming down and testify. And we're going to try to get out of here by 8:00, because we're only taking public testimony. We're not doing any amendments submitted, so we get through the public process on this. I know the fire marshal will be available to us in case there's going to be overflow. The Curran Room will have a screen and seats set up. I know the balcony is not set up yet, Council President, but the Curran Room.
The balcony will, no, not Wednesday?
Not for Wednesday. The Curran Room will be set up with a screen and chairs, so the overflow, we expect a lengthy hearing, so just be prepared for Wednesday, and we'll get through it, the public process, and then we'll have some work sessions and a couple work sessions, and we'll see what we're going to do. But remember Wednesday at 5:00.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Riceinger.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0630 on Wednesday, July 13 at 1:15 p.m. in the council chambers. This is zoning, it's conditional use conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to a one-family dwelling unit and one efficiency unit in the R8 zoning district, the variance located 317 West 30th Street. The committee will also hold a hearing on 16-0676 on Wednesday, July 13 at 1:30 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a planned unit development Amendment One-Three, Montgomery Park Business Center. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Okay. The city council may consider the adoption of the fiscal year 2017 tax rate at the next meeting of the city council on Monday, June 20 at 5:00 p.m. Any more announcements? Committee announcements? Okay, not yet. Regular announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. As for a moment of silence for DeAndre Barnes, DeAndre is a 13-year-old boy who was murdered over the weekend, lived in the Seton Hill neighborhood, and attended Booker T. Washington Elementary Middle School, or middle school, pardon me. I have another one. And also, another moment of silence for the 50 LGBT victims in Orlando,
Chair recognizes, any more? Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, we all know about what happened in Orlando, and my colleague has already spoken about what happened to the 13-year-old just here in Baltimore. But I think it's important for us to talk about this issue because it's going to be an issue that we all need to have a serious discussion about, not just in Baltimore, but in this country. When we think about the common denominator, whether it be the 13,000 people killed in this country last year by gun, or victims in a 13-year-old in Baltimore, or mass shooting victims in Orlando, or in Denver, or a four-year-old killed in Baltimore, they all have the one common denominator. It's guns. Guns is the common denominator. Now is not the time to be divisive and try to put one religion versus another. Now is time to put the campaign in your back pocket, and we have to have a serious discussion about guns and gun violence in our country. Because that's what happens. If you look at our homicide rate for the last years that official compared to other countries, ours is 2.9 per 100,000. That's 30 times more than in the United Kingdom, which is at .1. .1. If you just look at 60% of the homicides in 2012 in the United States were done with a gun versus 30% in Canada and 10% in United Kingdom. The common denominator is guns. Especially, it doesn't matter if it's an assault rifle used in a mass shooting or it's a pistol revolver used to snuff out some young kid who may have made a bad decision. Guns are the common denominator. It's time for us to stop thinking about guns as something that we should be born with in our hand and take to our grave. And money is the only thing that matters. And think about what it is doing to people and our families in our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And that is so true. You know, every time they bring up guns, whether it's in the NAPLAs or whether it's in Congress or in the Senate, they always shoot it down. But yet, we have, like you said, one of the highest murder rates anywhere in this country and now in the cities. And something needs to be done. We send troops over to Iraq. We send troops over to Afghanistan. We send troops everywhere but here. And I'm not asking that we have a military state, but we need to do something. We need to think outside of the box and start considering how we're going to make America's neighborhoods safe for all of us to live in a peaceful community. So, Councilman, that was something that was very, you know, great for you to do. And I hope that this council can go on record, since you brought it up, as supporting a resolution going to the state and to Congress and to our president, that we are serious about reducing the murder rate in our city and across America. Because something has to be done. Enough is enough. Any more regular announcements? Please, Council Vice President Rossinger, Pete Hall, for a moment of silence. Hall, H-A-L-L, Hall. And if I might speak just briefly about what happened in Orlando, Florida, it boggles my mind how someone can walk into a venue with the type of assault weapon that was used to gun down 50-plus people. Somebody had to see something. There's no way in the world that you can walk into a venue carrying those kind of weapons. You have to have bullets. You have to have a case to carry it in. Every venue that I have been to since the terrorist attack, they check you. When you come into City Hall, they warn you. You go into State House, they warn you. I mean, it's just getting out of the hand that people are so, I wouldn't say mentally unstable, but filled with so much hatred that they would go to gun down people unexpectedly. This is America. You've never heard of these kind of things taking place in America, except for the last 10, 15 years with the terrorist attacks that's been on our grounds here. But we, as citizens of Baltimore, need to make our voice heard in Washington. We need to go not just to a NAPLAs, not just come to City Hall. We need to take some trips down to Washington, D.C., and let the government know how we feel about protecting our own communities. You know, instead of wasting a lot of money on foreign soil, let's start putting money here where we live. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I forgot to mention, this evening, there's going to be a candlelight vigil at 7:00 p.m. at the corner of North and Charles at the Why Not Lot in memory of the victims of that senseless tragedy in Orlando. And if any of my colleagues are available, please, would love to have you join us. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, June 20 at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Mr. President, I ask for a moment of silence for Pete Hall, DeAndre Barnes, and also the 50 Orlando, Florida
Thank you. There being no further business, concludes the 121st meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.